Ladies and gentlemen, if I can ask my fellow board members to come to the table, we are running a couple of moments late for the start of the session. And before we start our work session, we do need to comply with our closed meeting rules, and so I'm going to read the motion. In order to comply with Section 2.23712D of the Code of Virginia, it is necessary for the board it is necessary for the board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on April 25, 2019, and to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the board during the closed meeting. Do we have a motion? Folks, do we have a motion on the closed we have a motion by Mr. McElveen, seconded by Ms. Darinak Kofax? All those in favor? And that motion is Ms. Strauss, Ms. Palchek, Mr. Moon, Ms. Keys-Gamara, Ms. Evans, Ms. Darinak Kofax, Mr. McElveen, Ms. Corbett Sanders, Mr. Wilson, Ms. Hines, Ms. Schultz are all away from the table. But that motion passes. And so now I'm going to hand the meeting over to Ms. Palchek and Ms. Evans for who are the meeting managers for this portion of the agenda. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Just to clarify, tonight we will be reviewing three draft versions that were brought forward for the 2020-2021 school year. So not next year, that's later tonight, but the 2020-2021 school year. There are three versions before us, and because we only have about 45 minutes left, and we're hoping to be able to have some clarity after this, I believe Dr. Nixon will share a little bit about the calendar, a little bit about each draft version, and then our goals will be to take some comments and to hopefully narrow down to hopefully not more than two versions to figure out what kind of public input and sharing or task Dr. Nixon to get public input on those draft recommendations that we decide on, and to consider when we think maybe come back to us when the vote will be. I believe the vote is now scheduled very soon, I believe, in early May. So we will likely be pushing back the vote for this calendar until we have a chance to get more community input. So I think a little bit, Dr. Nixon, if you want to go through that, and we will be very strict about time, so please take, keep track of the questions or comments you have on the calendars.
Okay, thank you. So, yes, we can go ahead and put up version one. So in version one, some highlights include that the new teacher orientation would run from August 10th to the 13th. Teachers would be returning on Thursday, August 13th for a teacher workday from a remote location. The first day for students would be on August 24th, and just a note, in 2019, our students will be returning on August 26th.
Sorry, Dr. Nixon, could I pause you for a minute? Do you mind giving a little feedback on some of the challenges about the year, the calendar, and then which version was recommended by the committee, maybe briefly?
Sure.
Why? Thank you.
Certainly. So the calendars that you're reviewing today are a compilation of the Calendar Committee's discussions, considerations, and best thinking. The 2020-2021 standard school year calendar was developed with a core focus on the instructional needs of our students. And while teaching and learning was the priority, we also tried to balance various factors and considerations, such as the request to put back in the professional development days, requests for early release days to be placed back into the calendar, and even the added considerations of inauguration and the pre-Labor Day Friday holidays. So there were a number of considerations that were being navigated as the Calendar Committee was looking at these. And version one has taken those new changes into account, meaning the addition of the Friday prior to Labor Day and the inauguration. So version one also preserves the Wednesday prior to Thanksgiving. There was a lot of energy around keeping that as a full release day. It preserves the two weeks at the winter break and includes inauguration on January 20th. In version one, the final day for students would be Friday, June 11th, and the last day for teachers would be Monday, June 14th.
I'm sorry, if you would just go a little bit slower over the
Oh, sure, sorry.
Just because we're just trying to follow all the little colored squares. Bingo.
So I'll repeat, in version one, the Wednesday prior to Thanksgiving as a full day off is preserved, as are the two weeks at the winter break. And version one also, as well as all the versions, include inauguration on January 20th. And in version one, the final day for students would be on Friday, June 11th, and the last day for teachers, Monday, June 14th. The committee, the Calendar Committee, preferred version one. In version two? Okay. New teacher orientation would run from August 17th to the 20th. Teachers would return on Friday, August 21st for a teacher workday from a remote location. First day back for students would be Monday, August 31st. Friday, September 4th is the pre-Labor Day holiday. And again, in version two, the Wednesday prior to Thanksgiving remains a full day off. The two-week winter break is preserved, and this also includes the inauguration day. In version two, the last day for students would be Monday, June 21st, and the last day for teachers, Tuesday, June 22nd. So truly, the major differences between version one and two is really the start date, the one week prior to Labor Day versus the two weeks. Those are the, that's the most significant characteristic difference. Okay, version three. So in one of our managers' meetings, it was brought to our attention that June 8th is a gubernatorial election, and so there was some conversation on whether or not we would need June 8th, June 8th off as well. And if that were the case, the proposal was that new teacher orientation in version three would still run August 10th through 13th. Teachers would return on August 13th with the optimal work from alternate location. The students would still be starting two weeks prior. The most significant difference in version three is that the Wednesday prior to Thanksgiving would revert to a two-hour early release. The winter break would be shortened by three days. Students would finish the year on Monday, June 7th, and teachers on June 8th, and it would then allow us to have off or have the schools available without children for the gubernatorial election. If I would also like the opportunity to just highlight that our committee met three times over January and February, and was comprised of representatives from internal and external stakeholder groups. And these groups included community, religious organizations, our teacher organizations, associations, pardon me, principal association representatives, and central office staff. And we did meet with the presidents of FCC, PTA, and SEPTA as well, and presented the versions of the calendars to those presidents. And as Ms. Palchek said earlier, if the board narrows it down to two versions, if that's something that can happen, then Human Resources, in collaboration with our Communications Office, can certainly post these for community feedback. And I'll, you know, figure out what the alternate timeline would be for getting it prepared for a vote, so we could work collaboratively to do that.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much, Dr. Nixon and Michael, for your work on this. I know it has culmination of probably all the worst factors we could have in one calendar, so it will be a challenge. So we will, I will announce the names I have so far, and we will be very strict, about three minutes. Please hold anything for, go back at the end, and we hope to have some next steps at the end of this meeting today. So I have Ryan, Karen Corbett Sanders, Karen Keys-Gamara, and Janie. Is there anyone else who'd like to be on the list? Okay. So Ryan, go ahead.
Thank you. So my initial reaction is that the Calendar Committee's preferred recommendation of version one is probably preferable to the other two. One of the questions that I received and passed along to my colleagues today was about the schools that have already begun populating their master schedules and have determined they're blocking already. And there was a request that the board consider having two A-days in a row at the beginning of the year, and then making up that B-day later in the year. But my understanding from staff is that because that's not something the board would set, schools would have to do that internally. So that does not rise to our level of discussion here. Can I just give, get staff to talk to this about not only that issue, but the fact that schools have already begun plugging this information into their systems, what impact our change at this point might mean? Thank you.
I think the concern has actually come up around the 1920 calendar, because that had already been approved at a prior meeting, and I know that's up for discussion later tonight to be revised for the upcoming year. So because it had already been posted, schools had already started to look at making plans around scheduling for the upcoming school year next year. Now that we're going back and having to make some revisions because of those legislation changes, it does kind of impact what that planning is around that. But we set the instructional days, and then the schools do have the flexibility to kind of figure out what their block scheduling is around that to work for them best.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Ryan, very, one minute. Karen Corbett Sanders?
Super, thank you. And thank you for PEC taking this on. I know that it is the perfect storm of calendar years, and so I appreciate your patience. I am a little concerned. I'm concerned about a couple of things. One, starting two weeks before Labor Day, that was a discussion that we had extensively when we went to a pre-Labor Day start. And so any change where we would go to more than one week before Labor Day, I think, requires broader community engagement. And as, I appreciate Ms. Nixon that you, or Dr. Nixon, that you informed us as to how, who was on the Calendar Committee, and that you had presented the calendar to the president of the FCC, PTA, and the SEPTA. I'm a little concerned that that Calendar Committee did not necessarily include the parent engagement that we would like to have on an issue of this magnitude. And so I would like to know from PEC if they would, what their intention is, is to sending out one, two, or three calendars to the broader community. And along those lines, I have had some, both positive and negative feedback about the two-week break at the winter holidays. There, it has been expressed by families that may not have the gift of time that others have, and with two weeks off, they do require more childcare, there's some food insecurity concerns, and it can provide some challenge, or pose some challenges. So I would urge, and I guess this would be a next step, is to have a fuller consultation on a couple of these calendars in the form of a, an inquiry to the community, some sort of
So if I may pause you for a minute, I should have, so when we did this with the committee, the rule I had was, let's propose a specific change in motion. So these are three full calendars we're looking at. The goal is to have hopefully not more than two versions that we can then send out to the public to then get their feedback and return to us. So for instance, if I'm hearing, I think it's a great idea, you say, let's take version two and remove the first two or three days of the two-week winter break.
Well, I would suggest, Ms. Palchek, that we actually have a conversation in the community by soliciting their input, which is, we've done this for a couple of years, one or two weeks before, before Labor Day, and one or two weeks for winter holiday. And actually be very precise as to what we're looking for, and whether or not the Wednesday before Thanksgiving is something that is important. And I'm going to channel my, I know another colleague will raise, and what about Veterans Day? So just actually be very specific of, I brought a smile to someone's face. Be very specific about what we want to know from the community, and so have specific questions, and then also, we could provide the two or three calendars.
You're saying, a bit the way we've done the survey in the past?
Right.
Send that out again, and with the calendars?
Correct.
Because some of the feedback we got was, without the calendars, it's hard to understand the impact on some of those questions.
That would be my advocacy, please.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. We had, excellent. Karen Keys-Gamara?
Thank you. I, I know there have been a number of questions about religious holidays, and so I was wondering if you could point out in these drafts, and we can start with one, because that's the one that PEC is recommending, I believe, what religious holidays would be included, whether Veterans Day is included. I just want to, I want to get clarification on that.
Is that your only question? I would just want to make sure you get them all in. Yes. Okay. And so actually, Ms. Evans and I do have a, we had a forum topic that we hope to turn into a next step here around religious observances. And in the meantime, as you can see, and Ms., Dr. Nixon can add to this, the first step we have is that at minimum, the major holidays have been included here as information, which is new in the past couple of years. So if you look, they are starred, and then we always have them vetted with our faith leaders before they're finalized. But we, it has not been, the feedback that was received was to communicate them, but not to have them be considered for days off or for professional development. Because for instance, last year, I believe, we closed early for Yom Kippur, but teachers were not able to participate in professional development at that time. So at this point, we do not have that as a policy or a regulation, and Ms. Evans and I would like to form an ad hoc committee to look at that.
So I, my, the point of my question
Yes.
was so that the public could hear what was included, because I know we've had lots of discussion regarding that. And I'm not sure whether the, number one, includes Veterans Day either.
Dr. Nixon?
They're not included as official holidays. The religious holidays are noted in the box, and Veterans Day is
What would those be? For, just
So Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur in September are noted in the 2020, September 2020 box under version one, and all the versions. Rosh Hashanah is marked as the 19th, and Yom Kippur, the 28th.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see that. Okay. But no Veterans Day? Correct? Okay.
That's correct.
And are they available in any of these other versions? Is that available in any of the other versions?
The religious holidays are noted in all the versions, but Veterans Day is not.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I have a few others. Janie, Megan, Elizabeth, Tom, and Mr. Moon, before go-backs.
Okay, well, first of all, I think the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, having that a full day off, was very helpful to an awful lot of families, given the travel plans of an awful lot of our families and our employees, and the traffic problem that we have. So however we come down on this, I would imagine when we go out to the community, that they will like that full day, Wednesday off. And the two weeks at, at winter break, because I remember when we instituted that, a lot of that had to do with our employees who wanted that. And again, we are an international student body, parent community, and a lot of our families, even some of our high-needs families, will, will travel. And we went to two weeks at, at winter break, hoping that we would, our children would miss less school when they would perhaps go home. So those are my two pieces.
Okay. Thank you, Janie. Megan?
Thank you. To my colleagues, I joined the table late because I was dealing with a time-sensitive constituent matter that I needed to talk with LT on. In terms of my questions with the calendar, I do want to share with you the input I've been hearing from my constituents in the Braddock District. First of all, draft one, where we would start school two weeks before Labor Day, I am not hearing support from that in my community at all, not just from our families, who have concerns about how incredibly hot it still is in the swampland of Washington DC in August, and especially for half of our population that is in K6, and recess, and getting outside is important, and it's extraordinarily hot in August. But even more importantly for our teachers, I draw attention to my colleagues, that because of where Labor Day would fall in that, in 2020-21, if we were to go with this calendar, new teachers would be needed, needing to report as early as August 10th. It's the second week in August. And for a lot of our families, again, Washington DC, Congress, it shuts down the month of August. This school board shuts down and goes into recess in August. And so the notion that we would start having employees reporting to work August 10th, I don't think reflects our community's wishes and needs at all. So I can't even begin to support version one. Version three, that's the one where we only would have then about a week off between Christmas and New Year's. Again, I have, and in fact, the first holiday would be Christmas Eve, starting Christmas Eve. I have heard, in my seven and a half years on this board, from our teachers, our school employees, and our families, that the two weeks at that winter holiday is so helpful for people to be able to recharge their batteries. It's been a long slog through the semester, and families really like that opportunity. It's not whether you're going to travel far and wide, it's the ability to relax, and even the science shows
Megan, you have about 30 seconds, just letting
Oh, I got 30 seconds? Why, I guess, so are we going to have more conversations?
We're trying to see how much we can do, so we can try to honor getting through the process before the end of the year. So anything we can do today is just helpful.
Oh, all right. So this isn't a one-shot deal, we're going to have another conversation?
We're the ones who want to get this out by the end of the, this school year, right? So
Right.
We will try to schedule again, so it's just, we're just trying to get as much as we can, because we keep getting pushback, that's all.
Okay, so let me ask this before I go any further then, since it's time-sensitive. When is the official date that staff has said, we feel we need to get this voted on to be helpful to the community?
It's not staff. I believe when, since I've been on the board, we've made that commitment to the community that we want the calendar to be available by the end, before families go on vacation, right? The year before. So that would be by the end of this school year.
So that's the target for this board?
That's our target, yes.
Okay, so we're two months away, and so we've, we've got time if we need to. So the only other thing I will say to my colleagues is, so version two looks the closest on something that we can work with, but version two still needs some work. I don't think you want to have a year-end on June 21st and a teacher workday on the 22nd.
So Megan, can I have you do a go-back, and maybe have a specific things you'd like to change in draft two and a go-back? Is that okay?
I just wanted to finish my one final point, which was simply that this is a calendar that we want to honor Inauguration Day, and then have a teacher workday, and so it's a three-day holiday in January versus being able to maybe for once do Veterans Day. And why inauguration day still keeps being promoted by this school system, I do not know. In my childhood, and in my children's childhood, inauguration day is not something in our household that we expected to have off.
Thank you. Dr. Nixon, Michael, can you tell us, is that a regulation we've had? I know that history is, we asked it on the committee for inauguration day.
So historically, the county has taken inauguration day off, given the traffic in the area, the overwhelming traffic that's coming to the area, having buses on the road. That's been a consideration that we've, that we've taken into consideration during my previous time when I was doing the calendar.
Okay, thank you. I have Elizabeth, Tom, and Illyon.
Okay, so if we start with a premise that one was most thought of by employees, but this didn't go to parents, is that correct? Can I understand that? It didn't, there was no parent survey on this?
Correct, that did not go out to parents, yes.
Okay, so
Elizabeth, if you wouldn't mind asking all your questions?
Oh, ask my questions how I want to ask my questions. So my, my goal is that we should engage parents on a calendar. This is a fundamental, I sort of don't even understand the basics of even us discussing it without having had some parental input. If I look at this version one, yes, getting kids out June 11th, I know kids go to camp, there are camps that are set up, that if our kids go another week, the kids are out of school anyway, because the kids are gone to the camp, because the camps are immovable, because the rest of the Commonwealth of Virginia is already out, and so they're not going to wait for Fairfax to get around to letting their children out of school. In particular, I have a problem with the fact that, once again, we don't have Veterans Day. We seem to celebrate allowing people to have off two days, actually, three days for Thanksgiving, a day for inauguration day, but we can't seem to acknowledge veterans in the most veteran-dense county. But the biggest problem I have with this one, if you look in the bottom right-hand corner where the quarter duration is, that we have quarter duration one is 47 days, quarter duration two is 40, quarter duration three is 50 days. I mean, you know, that is a massive difference, and then back down to 43 days. So my suggestion would be, if we become wedded to this, not only do we work in Veterans Day, but that we find a way with April 9th. April 9th is showing as the quarter end after the spring break. Why not back that up? Why not back that up before spring break in order to shorten it? Or move the quarter end on January Or move the quarter end on January 15th to January 22nd to balance out those quarters? Because when you have a long quarter and a long drive, and particularly in that third quarter when there are fewer holidays, that becomes a breakneck issue for, for students and particularly students in high school. That's a, that's a particularly grueling time period. So I don't think that that is, that is helpful. And I don't know where, who's keeping track of three minutes so that we would even be able to follow it. But I do think we should be able to ask staff whatever questions we want. Again, we are hamstringing ourselves and we need to have a conversation, not be strung up by our own part.
Okay, would you like a follow-up? I guess not. Tom, Illyon, Tammy, and Sandy.
Thank you. So I'm not going to, I won't even take my time so much, but I do want to just echo the need for parental input. I think that's crucial. If, we need to focus on finding a way to get Veterans Day into our calendar. I think it's an embarrassment, given the, the number of defense employees, Defense Department, active duty and contract employees serving in the defense community. We need to acknowledge our veterans. And then lastly, I've had, I know we've, we've had, I think, considerable input regarding religious holidays, but I've received feedback from the community about trying to find a way to acknowledge Lunar New Year, which falls on a Friday in 2021. The Asian community and, and others who celebrate Lunar New Year would like, I think, to have that day included and as well as holy for those in the Indian population. It's a significant holiday that's not on our calendar.
Okay, thank you. Illyon?
Since we have a regular meeting starting at 7 o'clock, I'm going to be very quick that before we schedule another work session to continue discussing the calendar, I would like to have an opportunity to hear feedback from parents and other community members as well. When we do the, we'll call the survey, when we send out a survey, it is always better to have extra, some draft calendars. It could be two or it could be three, but, you know, but obviously need to be more than one. And also, also, you know, ask, parents and community members provide us some suggestions. You know, they could include, you know, as Mr. Wilson was saying, you know, Veterans Day, or it could be a, the day before Thanksgiving Day, or it could be a duration of a winter break, or it could be even a presidential inaugural, inaugural day, or some other suggestions so that we could, at the next work session, our discussion could start reflecting the feedback from the community.
Thank you, Illyon. Tammy, Sandy, and then Brian has a go back.
Thank you. Thanks for your work on this. I know calendars are difficult. I would say, my opinion right now is that I like draft number two the best. I do think it's difficult for us as a system to begin two weeks prior for all the, I'm going to stay in my lane as far as time for all the reasons my colleagues have noted. I do 100% wholeheartedly agree, just as we, when we first put out a few years back, the two-week holiday break, we did some kind of surveying on that. So Scott, whatever your team or the prior team did to that, just kind of, kind of go there. I definitely think we need the questions of Veterans Day, Thanksgiving, the day before Thanksgiving, the amount of winter break. And I would say respectfully that inauguration day, because of our close proximity to DC, is a, a smart idea to have it off, you know, every four years when that happens. But, you know, you can put it out there and ask, but I do think it's problematic oftentimes to have school on inauguration day. So that's it.
Thank you. Sandy?
Thank you very much. And I agree with all of those who said we do need more parent input in this. So I, I would like to hear exactly how we are, are going to have more, more input, whether it's a survey, whether it's putting out two or three. I, I can see the value of putting out only two. And if we did that, I, my preference would be to put out version number one and version number two. One of them is, they, they give the different parameters, basically, the, the one week before Labor Day start and the two week before Labor Days start. I do, I don't have the same concerns about the August 24th start, as some of my colleagues have mentioned. This coming, this year in 2019, we're starting on August 26th. So if we started on August 24th, that would only be two days before where we're starting this year. So Labor Day is very, very late with the 2021 calendar. I, I also have a, a deep concern about the religious holidays. We, we talk about this and I, I do think it's time. And I want to thank Ms. Palczek both for her work on the calendar committee and on the forum topic that she was kind enough to, to allow me to share in. And just, I will, will say that we are recommending that we have an ad hoc committee to review the practices and, and come up with some recommendations, some solid recommendations on how to deal with the various religious holidays as, as well as other religious observances. It's not just the religious holidays. I would like to see such a task force also look at, do we properly accommodate, for example, that Friday is a religious day for so many of our students? Do we consistently make accommodations for our Muslim students on Fridays? And I think, so I think that it, it goes a bit beyond the holidays, although I do believe that we really do need to, to have a close look at how we can accommodate our holidays for, particularly for the, the major religious holidays. So I guess my advocacy at this point would be to put out version one and version two to the public, to ask for their preferences on those. And I guess along the lines that Mr. Moon was getting at, to say, if you, if you want to modify this, how would you modify it? With the clear understanding that if you add a holiday, you have to add a day someplace because people will often say, oh, yes, I make that a holiday, make that a holiday. And then they don't realize you have to then finish the, the end of the year later or, or take it away from someplace. I do think that the, the, the winter break, I was surprised, but people have been very consistent about one and two weeks there. So those are my thoughts.
Perfect. I will speak briefly before we do go backs. And I do appreciate my colleagues. I know it's confusing, we're a work session, even though we're here at the dais today. And it does sound like we'll definitely have more time to look at this. What I am hearing, I think is what Sandy said, is that we would like, and, and PEC can take this on and work with staff, look at versions one and two. I haven't heard any, anyone ask for version three, so please let me know if you disagree. And to share those versions, perhaps tweaked along with consider, question a survey that might include the length of winter break, Veterans Day, a variety of religious holidays, Thanksgiving, and specifically here for the inauguration day. So I'm hearing some of those. Happy to include some more. This is my time, I'm sorry. Just, just give me a minute and I'm happy to take some more. And so that's a little bit of what I'm hearing is, and please let me know if you disagree, but consensus around coming back with a proposal to the board about community input, parent input around including both a survey and draft. I've heard versions one and two, so I'm happy to hear any other recommendations. And thank you, Ms. Evans, for sharing our forum topic, which is to create an ad hoc committee. And perhaps we can talk about it more if we reschedule a work session and we can work with the chair on how to do that and what that would mean. And the importance of both what's included or not on the calendar, but also the communication, which we've started to do in the past two years, and the education piece is a big thing I've heard is, as we start to make sure we educate our staff and also our student community about what different, the, the diversity in our community means for religious observances. So that's, that's my input and I do have a couple of go backs. Would you like to be included, Ms. Schultz?
Yep.
I have Megan and then Elizabeth for go backs.
Thank you. My go back was, I'm not sure which on, on staff, if Dr. Brayband, you or someone from HR, but I, I received an email from a constituent who asked why in the 2020 draft calendar, we're reinstituting early release days and that apparently in this upcoming 2019, 2020 calendar, we do not have the two-hour early, early release. And so I wanted to get clarification if that is the case because I do know, parent feedback has been that the early release days do create childcare challenges for our families.
So let me share a little bit about that. That is true. This coming calendar won't. We heard a lot of feedback. Being a superintendent is balancing various stakeholders. The calendar represents one of the toughest jobs, I think, a school board has to do because you're trying to balance so many folks who use this calendar as a primary driver of what their, their year is going to be like. But our, our principals, our teachers are dying for professional development time and finding a way to create some time for them. This calendar, though, does go and make less early releases than, than what we had this year. And the early release now will only be a two-hour, not a three-hour early release. So there's less of them. It's only two hours, but it does try to build back in some professional development time. And that remains an issue frankly, for all American education calendars compared to the rest of the world where professional development time for teachers to meet and learn is just not elevated in the school calendars. And, and so we, we've made some attempt to try to do that in the 2021 calendar.
I appreciate that, Dr. Braybrand. I do recall someone drew my attention years ago that Arlington had a teacher contract length of 198 days and that we have 194 days. So I do think that there's something to look into, that if that is in fact true, then that might be where Arlington has almost a full week of professional development that we don't have built in. And I know we do a lot of comparisons with Arlington's salary compensation compared to ours, and I don't know if that's ever been looked at as, they're part of their additional compensation is because they're working an extra four days. But I think that's something to be keeping in mind. I just want to say that to my colleagues, I think we have to get this calendar a little more refined before we put out into a survey. I don't think right now that versions one or two have been refined well enough compared to what we currently have this coming year and where the public has seemed happy enough. And so I don't want to send out something that people just end up being very critical about. And then to Ms. Evans' concern about religious holidays, certainly support the ad hoc group looking at that, but I want to caution that one of the things, our counterpart over in Montgomery County Public Schools, their school board has said for many years is, be cognizant that we're, when we set our calendar, we're not recognizing anyone's religion. This isn't about, I, I understand what, what has been the tradition is looking at where do you have mass volume of people who are going to be taking time off? And in the United States and actually around the world, there is a lot of people who take time off in, in that last week of December. Furniture companies shut down and lots of companies shut down in that final week in December. So that's been a natural thing. Ms. Palczek, I will tell you, I'm a big fan of what you've said with spring break, which is we need to stop following a certain holiday every year. And I think we should just look at what's the midpoint? And colleges do it that way and our families, I think, would like the fact that they can just get a break in between the semester.
Thank you. Ms. Schultz?
So none of the, the litany that you asked that be included, included the point that I made about the quarter duration problem, which is a very significant problem. There's a very significant, the, the thing that we are supposed to be about is academic achievement. And if you're impeding academic achievement, I think that that is a significant problem. And, and having grossly imbalanced quarters, as much as 10 days swing, is not, is not a balanced approach to a calendar. And I do think that that has to be included. With respect, the early releases don't reflect any professional development on them. There are five early release days, both on draft version one and draft version two, and it does not show any professional development on those days. I, I do not think that it is wise to build in early release days as many as five times in the, I mean, five times could be five, five calendar days for, for an employee at work. And if the students are already at school, keeping them an additional two or three hours provides some consistency in their day. We got rid of full-day Mondays after 47 years. And, you know, let's not return to partial versions of it at ad hoc times through the calendar year. So I'm not a supporter of the early release days. I think it causes havoc for, for families and provides inconsistency for students. And there, there are all, all kinds of reasons, academic and otherwise, that once we have a planned school day and planned transportation, then we should carry through with that school day. I do support a two-week break and our families do, do tend to provide very consistent feedback that that is supported. So I agree. I think there needs to be more refinement on this before it goes out with the primary focus being parental input and academic achievement.
Okay, thank you. Because in the interest of time, I'd like to, first of all, it sounds like version three is out, so I'm going to say we have consensus not to look at version three. I've heard a few different things. I want to see, first of all, if there is consensus. I've heard a little bit on both sides that doing a survey and including versions one and two as, as they are, is there, is there enough consensus to say one and two with a survey just to get some additional input before we tweak them, that they are ready to try to get some quick inputs so that we can have more information before we move forward? So I, I guess I'll just take a quick vote for those who feel that we are ready to have drafts one and two with additional survey questions that will be shared before, with the board before they go out, are ready to get parental and community feedback. So I guess a show of hands at this point, who's ready to have versions one and two go out with survey questions for input? So let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Okay. So we will, with PEC in the chair and, and Dr. Nixon in the office, work on a draft of survey questions and get versions one and two back to the board before we send them out. Madam Chair, does that feel appropriate to you?
Madam Chair of PEC, of course, we will support your initiative.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate you, appreciate my colleagues and the work of the committee and of our, Dr. Nixon, your team on this valiant effort. Thank you.
So ladies and gentlemen, we need to take a five-minute break so that we can reset everything for the regular work session, please.